Dr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Sodder? Mrs. Spazada? Mr. Riley?
Here.
Do you have any comments to report?
Yes, Mr. Riley, nothing to report other than that I'd like to give Mrs. James credit. We have on paper this group a lot of our payroll information regarding payroll stubs for those who have direct deposit. Also at the high school, they've got paperless with report cards and they will follow up with progress reports. And that would be considerable savings as well as reducing the need for all the laboring and post-aging.
Who's secretary of report?
None at this time.
At this time, as advertised, and it's detailed on M.J. Montauk. We had a meeting a few weeks back and discussed the potential of having solar energy on our buildings, six of our seven buildings. I said in that meeting that we would have a facilities committee meeting, which we did subsequent to that meeting. Which we had the architect bond council represented from Bayonne School Districts, which was one of the first districts to have solar in their district. And we walked away from that meeting very positive as far as having finally a serious revenue generating possibility for the district of Nutley. And we're going to give the wrestling board the same detail that we received that night as the facilities committee. And then we'll discuss it further as far as the potential of moving this forward for a potential referendum question in April. So Tony, if you could take the floor, please.
Thank you.
Spizil Architects, which is going to generate the specifications for the project.
My name is Anthony Catana. I'm director of building technology for the Spizil Architectural Group. We've been doing quite a bit of work in the district lately, bringing up the previous referendum, including Spring Garden and a few other things. But I'm here tonight to talk mostly about solar, the advantages of it. Renewable energy, as you know, is a new phenomenon. It's been around for a long time, but currently a lot of school districts are utilizing it as a revenue generating plan. Other renewable energies include wind, solar, thermal, geothermal. But traditionally, we get most of our electricity from gas and electric, or get it, most of our utilities from gas and electric. Solar comes in a lot of different forms. The conventional stuff that you see is called crystalline. That's the regular solar panels that you see mostly everywhere. They do have other technology, thin film, which is very flexible, can be applied to things. It's not as efficient, it's a little bit more expensive. Solar comes in many different shapes, sizes, can be applied to many different things. The basic economics of it is that it reduces your energy consumption. As you're generating it, you get to use less of what you would normally use. So for instance, if you spend $10 on electricity and you can generate a dollar's worth of electricity, now you only have to spend $9 on electricity and you get that $10 free. Nothing is free, you're going to pay for the solar. But the advantage is for schools is that they can generate. When we design systems, we look at a lot of things. We look at where the trees are, where things are on the building, the orientations of the buildings. We go through everything on the buildings with a special device that basically takes pictures and analyzes the efficiencies of the systems so that you have the most accurate and well-laid out solar system on the building. You can do ground installations. Not a lot of room in Nutley to do ground installations, though we have been putting them over a lot of parking areas. So you can take advantage of parking lots by putting in canopy systems. Most of the systems we do in school are dead weight ballasted systems, meaning that basically these solar panels are put on the roofs. They're ballasted down with weights. You can pick them up and move them if you wanted to. So they're not fixed to the roof, they don't penetrate the roof, they don't put holes in your roof. The ideal for a school is, we don't want to put holes in the roof. Doesn't make any sense to put hole in the roof. They are removable, they do tilt up if you need to get access to something. If you do have a problem, they easily come off, they easily go back on. They are compatible with roof warranties, we make sure of that. And they do not weigh a lot, they're anywhere from four to nine pounds a square foot. Most of your structure is made for that anyway, it's built in allowances for your roof. Ground installations, you can put them directly on the ground, you can put them in canopies. I'll show you a few of those things. Some examples, a flat ballasted system, if you had a flat, flat roof. We've done that in places where you don't have south orientation. If you don't have a good south orientation, actually, really doesn't matter too much out of south, you could be up to 45 degrees out of south. It really doesn't play havoc with you. But if you're really way out of whack, you can go to the flat system, it'll track it fairly well, fairly efficiently, fairly efficient. Canopies, ballasted systems, slope systems, thin film systems. Thin film systems are used a lot on metal roofs. If you have metal roofs, you can actually apply this stuff to a metal roof. Energy savings, basically what I said before, every kilowatt you create, it's one kilowatt you don't have to buy. That's the savings involved. The other savings in New Jersey is what they call a REC, Renewable Energy Credit. Basically for 1,000 kilowatts, you get a REC. Every REC sells for $650 on the open market today. So if you have a 100 KW system, you're going to make $65,000 in recs. And I didn't want to just say that and have somebody say, "Well, prove it." These are the rates as they are selling as of August of 2009 through August of 2010. And as you can see, the high rates are 687, 680, 665. The lows look a little scary, except for the lows are there because somebody bought them in bulk, sold all 15 years at $170. So you can do that. You can sell every SREC you planned to generate all at once. One of the biggest benefits for a school is education. You'll get kiosks, but kiosks are nice for the front entry of your building, but anybody in the district can log on to your website and go in and see what's being generated. See how much power is being generated in every building, how much money you've saved, how many trees you've saved, how much carbon offset you've done, what the weather is like. All these systems come with weather centers. It's good for the students, good learning situations. Environmentally, 100 KW saves 820 tons of carbon, which is equivalent to 246 acres of trees, which is equivalent to 2,255,000 miles of mountain river. So quite a bit. Some examples of the work we've done, Lawrence Township, we did a 1.2 megawatt system there over seven schools. Most of those were roof mounted. Hobo Valley, it was a small system, but we've done as small as 40 KW, up to almost 2 megawatts. Stafford, it's on three schools, including sloped roofs, channeled roofs. Entry canopies, you see those a lot in schools, we cover them. It's not a problem, it's a good space to plug solar. That's an example of why they're flat, because entrance canopies are usually all over the place. Ground mounted systems. One of the things you do when you do solar initially is go to a government website, which is called PV Watts. And from it, it gets your latitude, longitude, and you enter in some basic information. This system is basically an 870 KW system plugged in into Nutley. It shows you what your cost of electricity is in Nutley, and it shows you how much energy you can save with that system in a year, which is basically 983,000 KWH, which is kilowatts per hour. From that, we derive how much annual savings is. At 13.2 cents per kilowatt hour, it's $129,000 in electrical savings per year on an 870 KW system. With the S-RCs that you get along with it for generating power, that's another $432,000. That's for 15 years. Careful, the S-RCs only go out 15 years. After 15 years, the S-RCs stop, but your energy savings continues. Now, solar panels are warranted for 20 years, but they are a piece of glass that will probably last 30 years without any problems and probably up to 50 years if they're well maintained, which doesn't take much to maintain a piece of glass. The pieces that need to be maintained on solar systems are what is called the inverter. Inverter is what converts it from DC into AC. And those things generally last about 15 years, but we build into the total project a replacement of it in 15 years. So you're covered for a good 30 years on the system. Generally, we tie that into your roof, roof warranties, generally the roof warranties are 30 years. So the idea is that the next time you have to replace your roof, the system will be done and it'll be time for you to take it off anyway. So we try not to do it on roofs that are old, which we won't allow you to do. I don't think anybody would have common sense for it. Schools we're looking at doing this on are Radcliffe, Lincoln, Washington, Yanticoop, Spring Garden, and the high school. The middle school was left out only because it's got a lot of funky roofs going on and there's not a lot of overall surface to actually put solar on there and be efficient. Bottom line, it's economical, it's educational, and it's environmental. That makes money for the school district.
Questions? Any questions from the board members?
Hi, Mr. President. The referendum was passed, would there be a tax increase on property authorities in this community?
We'll get to that, that's not for...
That's not a question, right?
Then we'll get to that with the bond council later on.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Maintenance?
There is no maintenance.
No maintenance?
If you want to be more efficient, it's not one of the values that are generated in the charts account for the fact you're smelling and generating. When you look at the charts, they realize the fall based on sun, and they account for the fall.
Okay, at this, thank you, Tony, appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to bring up some of the questions from board members. And, you know, is there empirical evidence as, from what kind of revenue this generates and how constant is that revenue? What kind of data and detail do we have as a board that will give the public a sense of comfort with that revenue generation? So we've invited the former VA of Bayonne School Systems, which was one of the first school systems to institute solar technology in their district. And that will be, Mr. Cluckdahl, we appreciate you coming in, if you could give us some detail, we appreciate that.
Thank you, my pleasure. Let me just give you a little background so you know what my background is. As President said, I was business administrator in Bayonne for 30 years. I just retired in July. And I knew Karen, your VA from our association of accounting, and she called me, she knew what needed to be put in. While I was in Bayonne, six years ago, seven years ago, we looked into going to solar as an energy savings and as a way to have energy savings and revenue for the future. And through my research, that's what I found out would be pretty much what Tony just outlined to you, the recs and the savings on energy. So we proposed it, we did a bond issue. We were lucky enough, at that time, there were matching grants that we could get from BPU, the Public Utilities Board, had grant programs back then that gave out rebates. And also, the State Department of Ed had money in their coffers, so they gave money to matching improvements on buildings. That money is gone, so that you don't have that way of getting it. But once we got into that, I also looked at payback of bonds and what we could do. So for the last six years, we had a year of planning and installation. For the last six years, we've had solar panels on our roofs, on nine of our roofs. And we have, as Tony put it, some funky roofs that didn't work on. We had 11 school buildings, we have actually 15 school buildings, but the high school complex, there's some disrespect to that. And so we have a system that would probably be about twice as big as what you're proposed here. And we, I actually have been in charge of selling the recs and monitoring the energy savings. In our system, just last year, the market, we sold our recs for $675 a rec. We had 1,818 of them, we would have 981, so you're about there. We made $1,227,000 in the sale of recs. And then we had energy savings of $292,000 from that energy. Our energy bill is about $850,000 a year. That is consistent, that has been consistent savings on the energy. The difference has been the recs. When we started out with the recs, and on my analysis back then, the rec price was 2.7. And we were making break even then. So when we went up to 6.75, we're more than break even. Now, remember, we had, we then didn't need to break even because we got the two grants. I was lucky enough to apply for two grants. And so we didn't have to make that break even, we were way ahead. So last year, into our budget as miscellaneous revenue, went $1,227,000. Of course, that sells a lot, but that buys a lot of tech, that saves a lot of jobs. And that is consistent, and they budgeted this year, when I was leading, they budgeted another $1,200,000. Price today, actually it is, and I checked the market this morning, I still get the sheets, and I still do, selling those recs for Bayonne. It's 6.75 for this year and 6.75 for next year. Now, although, and Tony failed to tell you how that rec price is determined, it's a market price. And it's based on that every producer of electricity in the state of New Jersey, PSENG, JCPN, LA, ACE, every one of them, have a minimum amount of energy that they have to produce by clean energy. If they don't, they pay a penalty. So that's what the market price is, that's usually what the top market price is, is the penalty price, because they either pay the penalty or buy it cheaper. That market has been short for the last three years, and in all likelihood, it will remain short. You know, your market, if you have a short market, it means the price doesn't stay high, okay? And the reason it's going to be short is right this year, the amount of percent of clean energy that every producer and distributor, I'll get that distributor in a minute, must be as 5%. That increases 1% every year for the next 15 years, actually 20 years, when you get to 2020. At that point, they must produce 20% of their energy in clean energy. If not, they have to pay the penalty, the rec price, for that. So the market will stay strong for at least that time and probably going on. The energy producers are trying to do everything they can, PSENG is doing it all over their market. In fact, you see the little ones on the power lines that are up there, little solar, they're owned by PSENG. They're trying to get as much power as they can, and they're collecting a lot through those little panels. So they're doing everything they can, but understand this. The percentage and the penalty goes for not just the producers, distributors as well. You've probably heard from Constellation Energy and things like that are out there, and they're selling to homeowners and saying, "We'll give you a discount on the price because we can redistribute." They have the same regulation. So even though they don't have a plant in New Jersey, they still have to make that 5% and up to the 20%. So they're in the market. In fact, Constellation Energy is who I sold to for the last three years, even though I've been in it for the last three years. So it's doable and it is out there. And a lot of, a lot of school boards getting into it because it's a way to do it. Some school boards get into a PPA, which is where you get a finance account, you don't get as much savings out of it as you would here. If you can get a bond through, it is absolutely worth it and you'll get the back of it. You'll get the money back. Any questions?
We'll talk, just before I ask that question, so we'll talk more about PPA when Anthony Semeney comes up from the bond council. He's going to go through the different ways that we can finance it and the different options.
Got it, thanks. Did you say that this was a referendum or not a referendum?
Yes, we were a type one school district, so we went through the board of school districts, and we had a referendum to do the bond. And then we reimbursed the bond through the two grants.
Okay, now, the impact on the property owners, plus or minus, initially, the taxes go up, flat, down?
Down.
Down? Do you have any idea how?
It would have went down, I believe, the first year at 2.70, we were saying that it was going to go down. Or let's put it this way, there would be no cost for the bond issued. The way it would go down is that the energy savings then would be a credit in the budget. And to give you an idea, 270, 300,000 dollars was what we were spending in our five-year textbook replacement plan. So I equated that to, that's going to pay for that. We're going to shift down from that line that business administrators never want to give up money that they have. So we didn't want to lower it, but we wanted to make it neutral. We wanted to make it the same. We wanted to shift it over and reuse that money someplace else, okay? But the bond money is not going to cost us at all because of revenue from the recs.
All right, so when you presented your school budget to the public for a vote, the people of Bayonne did not see an increase in that budget?
No, not for that item, not for the bond.
No, no, the whole budget, because the money's coming back if you're...
Money's coming back for one line up, the electric. The electric.
And that's it?
Yeah, because that's the only one in your current budget. The bond would be outside that, and your rec money coming back would offset the cost of the bond. Because remember, I'll let bond council explain to you how a bond works, but it's a flat, it's a flat rate, it's not like a mortgage, it's not going to melt.
Right, same rate?
I just want to show up with...
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand, so the rec income, the income from the recs is applied against the debt service, not against, does it go with the general revenue?
In your case, that's what will be applied against. In our case, because we had the grants to pay it off, it goes immediately into our budget as miscellaneous revenue.
And once the bonds are paid off, then it goes with the general...
Yes, that's exactly what that...
Until that point, it goes against debt service.
That's what you were dedicating for, I would say, yes. And then you get back to, that's what makes it even for going forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anybody else? At this time, I'd like to have, I appreciate John Chertel coming. And John Chertel is a business manager for a public service. And John, if you could come down and answer a couple of questions for us, I'd appreciate it. If you could first expand on what Mr. Cluckdahl was referring to as far as clean energy and penalties, and what public service and companies like public service are obligated over the next few years as far as the percentage of clean energy. Also, the other thing I'd like you to address for the public in the board, which is important, is one of the questions I was asked in me is, you know, as more companies, for example, again today, I drove through Somerville and Bridgewater, and Johnson &amp; Johnson just installed thousands of these panels on their front lawn. As more people are looking to accrue SREC value to their bottom line, what is that going to mean? And how much energy does public service provide? And what is the shortfall? And how do all these extra energies that we're going to create for all these companies that will finally get into solar, what's that going to mean ultimately to all these districts that are getting into solar?
Well, I think the goal of the statement as the plan is by 2020, 2025, and 20% of energy generated by renewables. So that's where the push for the extra SREC is coming from. So that's why the market is staying high. I sent you a link on our website to check, to Water Public Utilities, I checked the SREC values, it showed huge markets. So the actual production of clean energy isn't staying on pace with the plan to get to that 20%. So that's why the SREC value was going up. Now, my thing, the one thing I really wanted to add was, the Water Public Utilities approved net metering. And that's why the public service, I can't just explain how net metering works. If you put a solar system in the big field, put a solar system in, you want to connect to the grid, it would be considered a power producing. You would sell it back into the grid and you'd probably reimburse maybe two to three cents per kilowatt hour. To spur the renewable energy business, the Water Public Utilities approved net metering. So you could put a renewable site like solar, wind, you know, what have you, on your school or your business. You can't exceed the capacity of your school. If you go up to the capacity of your school, the limit was just set to 2 megawatts, which you're well beyond. So that, what you qualify as a net meter, a bi-directional meter, so that during the week, like, let's say a day, it's a sunny day, the school's up and running, maybe you're reducing half your energy. So half your use is coming in from the utility, you're paying your 12 to 15 cents a kilowatt hour. The other half, you're saving your 12 to 15 cents a kilowatt hour. You're not, you're not buying the utility, you're producing your own. Saturday, the school will scale down, you're producing your kilowatt hours. So your meter that you had paid the 12 cents during the week spins the opposite way. So you're subtracting 12 to 15 cents a kilowatt hour, you know, depending on the hourly pricing. And like I said, as opposed to if you were just a generator, you had a, you built a generation company, whether it was gas, oil, you put a power plant up. You connected to the grid, you generated energy, you would only sell it on market at two to three cents a kilowatt hour. But because of net metering, that's where it becomes beneficial. If it wasn't net metering, you just say, you know, "We want to put a solar plant in the middle of the old one. We don't, we don't want to have a football team anymore. We want to put solar and make some money." That's not where the savings is. Because of net metering, you generate those credits, whether you're using it or whether you're not using it. The meter spins one way, when you're not producing enough to satisfy your needs. Days when you're overproducing, it goes backwards, it actually subtracts that extra money. And that's where the savings come from, plus you add the SREC on top of it, that's where most of the savings comes from. You know, as Tony, we really get involved with, you know, the interconnection agreements, the metering, the inspections, and, you know, just the basic service. We're not, we're not sole owners of solar, you know, we don't recommend one over the other, we don't, we don't recommend, you know, the type, the technology. But we kind of get involved more in cost savings, just looking how much you're going to generate and matching up to your system, working to hook it into your existing electrical structure.
So there's two numbers that I want you to bring forward, if you can, that are important. The first number is, what is our estimated savings on just the electric component of this project?
Ryan, Ryan from Orion?
Oh, please, Ryan, come on down. Ryan, who joined us a few weeks ago at the middle school for our presentation from Orion Industries, a solar company.
So, hello, everyone. On a percentage basis, typically, your SREC income is going to be 70% of the savings versus 30% of your electricity savings. So if you took, he had a good slide up there, do you want to pop it up again, or, I mean, he basically had the numbers. It was, I think it was $128,000.
Do you mind reading it up again?
Yeah, you can.
Please. Does that equate to what you have here?
I don't know, 62, 64.
Or is the numbers are different?
Well, he may have used a different number, so...
Yeah, careful, because I think we're very...
These are estimates, let's just let everybody know, these are estimates, these aren't drop dead numbers, but we'll give you the high and the low, so you understand.
Yeah, correct. So for instance, on this particular analysis we did at 12 cents a kilowatt hour, because we didn't analyze the utility cost, it was 115 grand in savings for electricity. And what we always do for customers is we provide a low-end SREC estimate and a high-end SREC estimate. Typically, what you'll see on the spot price is where we refer to as high-end SREC estimates. And then on the low prices, where you can contract out for three to five years.
All right, so let Tony bring that number up on the SREC. So just over and above the SREC, just so we're clear, and I think Tony's number is actually higher, I think Tony's number is closer to 225,000.
My SREC value is...
No, I'm talking about the energy savings, the electric component, not the SREC.
Yeah, because I think I based it on Nutley, 13.2 cents, which is what the federal government says is the rate in Nutley. is the rate in.
And Ryan, would you?
I don't know if it is specific.
I sort of try.
All right, so your number's lower.
Maybe lower, correct.
So I believe Tony's number is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or greater, just on the electric savings annually, over and above all the SREC benefit, correct?
Correct. And my SREC value, I set at four hundred and forty dollars an SREC, which as you can tell, was a lot less than six seventy-five, which is what they're selling it for. But we're making the assumption over fifteen years that that number may come down. I don't actually see it coming down, because even the penalties drop over the next fifteen years.
Seventeen dollars.
Big seventeen dollars, so.
So the point is, we asked Tony to deliver to the board an ultra-conservative number so that it wasn't inflated, so that people wouldn't think we were making up a number and that we were giving you the high and not the low. This is really the low, number one. And number two, even after the fifteen-year revenue generation of the SREC, for the next five or ten years, which would be the balance of the life of the system, it'd still be, the future boards and taxpayers would still be reaping the benefit of the electric savings for the next five or ten years, correct?
And it really, I mean, that solar system's going to last longer. The reason that people will take solar systems off their roofs is because they need to repair or replace your roofing system. So, I mean, while your power warranty will go for twenty-five years, it's a semi-inductor, so it's not going to produce electricity after twenty-five years. Just the issue is, you're going to have to replace it.
And again, just for everyone's clarification here, the percentage of value that you're going to receive over the first ten years of the system and through twenty years, how is that the system warranted, so everybody understands?
So solar systems have two different types of warranties. One is a material workmanship warranty, which is five years typically on probably ninety-nine percent of the assets, which is material workmanship. And then you have power warranties, which is ninety percent of the power is warranted over the first ten years, eighty percent of the power is warranted over the next fifteen years. So you're guaranteed, assuming that you work with a reputable company and a reputable panel, ninety percent of the power over the first ten years and then eighty percent of power over twenty-five years. But just because the power warranty stops, doesn't mean it like, you know, magically drops off to zero. It will still continue to produce power, just the warranty doesn't last for twenty-five years. And before we get into that, I'd like to answer your question that you asked, John, about what's going to happen when more people come in? Because I think that's a very good question, and I get that, I get that asked a lot, is, you know, where is, what's going to happen when more people see six seventy, an SREC, and who's going to? The amount of capacity that's needed in New Jersey is staggering. And what John mentioned about net metering is very important as well, when you think about this. So when you think about this, it'd be very easy for us to put panels on landfills, it'd be very easiest to grab some farms and throw it in. The problem with that is doing these big projects is you can't meet your internal weighted return on financing investments. So these big, huge projects that you see to meet the goal aren't getting developed. You'll see some nice press releases here or there, but if you follow it a year later, two years later, they don't get built. And they don't get built because the financing required isn't available, because you don't have net metering in the middle of a farm or in the middle of, you know, landfill. There's no load for it to hit. So as more and more people do come in, I do foresee a small dip in twenty, we do foresee a small dip in SREC prices, not below four fifty, but a small dip coming in twenty twelve and twenty thirteen. But then as that number continues to ramp up, because what you'll have is economic growth, and what John mentioned is it's tied to generation. So as the economy grows, utilities haven't produced no power, so the percentage of clean energy continues to increase along with the percentage increasing. So to keep it simple, let's say you have to increase your percentage of clean energy every year one percent. And when the economy grows, that one percent continues to increase as well, because when the economy grows, you also have to produce more kilowatt hours. So this number continues to ratchet up, and it's very difficult for companies to meet that demand because of the amount of capacity that we need is staggering.
Do you know the percentage of renewable energy generated in New Jersey?
No, not off the top of my head. I know.
In the country, it's less than one percent.
Not, well, that's, I'm not counting hydro, yeah, so.
But the solar is, I think, point four percent.
Yeah.
It's miraculously small number. So in New Jersey, their goal is to get to twenty percent.
I think it's, I think it's two percent of solar, then twenty percent counting, yeah, two percent of solar, which you think is a small number, but it's very significant. Twenty percent is all energy, so it's wind and biomass and things like that. But the two percent of solar is ungodly when you think about it. I think, I heard a stat of twelve hundred megawatts by twenty twenty, and there's like a hundred and ten, a hundred and thirty installed already. So if you think about that, you're about four, four and a half million megawatt. So you're looking at, I mean, what is that? What, oh, no. It's a very big number. So it's going to be difficult to make the love.
Yeah.
All right, Tony, you just want to cover those numbers for us?
Yes, the numbers I used are very conservative. The thirteen point two cents is what the federal rate is for not least for utilities. The SRECs, again, are four forty, an SREC, as we were shown, they're going about six seventy-five. We do it as a conservative number. It's helped in the past, because what happens is you sell it at four forty, you sell it at six fifty, and all of a sudden, the revenue's a lot more, the payback is a lot faster. We like to be conservative in a couple of things.
Mr. President, a question.
Sure.
You talked about a growing economy. The economy as we are at the moment, it's not growing, and it's not going to grow in the foreseeable future.
I'm looking at two words here, I'm concerned about market fluctuations now. If the economy doesn't grow, the fluctuations of the market nose dives like it did, you know, past ten, fifteen years. What is the impact on us?
That's a great question, and I'll take that, because what's interesting is the gentleman mentioned, over the last three years, we've been in a short market, which has been one of the worst economic catastrophes in our country's history. And we're only at the low percentage of SREC demand. So if you think about it this way, right, the economy basically collapsed in late oh eight into oh nine, and didn't, I mean, GDP has recovered, but jobs and electricity demand has stayed the same. And that's why you can buy physical electricity cheaper, because physical electricity has gone down, and we're still in a short market as well. So even, even as it continues to decrease, you're still in a short market. So even if you lay flat, the number still goes up. And over the last two or three years, I mean, it's been a scary situation. So thinking about the level of catastrophic falloff that the economy saw, and you're still in a short market, I mean, that's a, that's a tough, tough one to think about if we did go.
It's possible to get anywhere.
If it could, if you see oh seven.
Have you ever seen your utility bills go down? I don't think, the economy's not going to make them go down. Even a bad economy, not going to go down.
So.
All right, thanks. Any other questions? Good question. Actually, thank you so much, appreciate it. Tony Solmeade from the bond council, who's going to cover basically the different types. One of the things that we haven't spoken about yet is what Architect touched on, which is called a PPA or Power Purchase Agreement. A power purchase agreement, the difference between a power purchase agreement and a flat-out purchase of a solar system, is that if we do an outright purchase, it would cost, we've estimated it, these numbers are not harsh, that they're estimated to be approximately four million dollars that we would have to bond out. If you do a PPA, you have a third party come out and fund it and install it and manage it. The only difference is, the only revenue you reap from that is the electrical savings. So the primary owner of the system, the funder, the financier, is the person who receives the benefit of all the SREC value. So I'll let Tony talk about that and the other financing as well. Please.
And the president.
Just tell everybody who you are, where you're from, so we know.
My name is Tony Solmeade, I'm an attorney and a commandmentist. We're the board of bond councils. We help you through the process of writing the bond question, selling the bonds, and making sure everything you do is legal, and I'm the real conservative guy in the group. What a power purchase agreement is, basically, as the president started to indicate, is you have an outside provider that comes in and basically, for lack of a better term, leases your roof. They come in and they put the solar panels on your roof. What you get for that, there's no upfront cost to the board for that. But you enter into an agreement with them where they say, we'll give you a fifteen percent energy reduction over the next fifteen years. So there's no upfront cost to you, but you get the energy savings, whatever that's agreed upon with the provider. What the provider gets, the provider gets the solar renewable energy credits, since they're a for-profit entity, there's other tax breaks they get, there's depreciation they get. So that's the benefit of the power purchases, so it's upfront, there's no costs to the board. It's just that you get the benefit of the energy savings. If the board is going to put a bond question to the public, you guys actually own the system, but you have to pay for the system. But by owning the system, you not only get the energy credits, you get the advantages of net metering, and you also get the SRECs to sell. That's the difference between doing a power purchase agreement and doing a bond referendum. If you do a power purchase agreement, you don't need to go to the voters to ask for their permission. If you do a bond referendum, where you're actually going to pay for the project and own the project, you have to go to the voters, because you're issuing debt to actually pay for the project. So that's the big difference in terms of legal approval process, is if you own it, you need voter approval. If you don't own it, you don't get voter approval. If I can just take a step back, the, before you guys were talking about, and then the gentleman of Bayonne was talking about how they funded their project. If I can just take you through a little bit of the history of how financing these projects came about. Like in Bayonne, they actually paid nothing for their system, because they used to have grants from the BPU, and there was money available from the Department of Education. That BPU grant money is no longer available. And currently, the Department of Education, BPU, is entitled to debt service aid under law, which says every year you get forty percent of your principal interest on your bond payments. However, because of the economic circumstances of the state, that is on hold. So currently, you're not eligible to get any debt service aid, they're not releasing it to debt service aid for projects. Other projects you may be doing for like rehabilitation, you might be eligible for a forty percent upfront grant. But again, the state is putting the brakes on that, and they're not issuing any of those grant, grant orders at this time. So what your district would be doing, you'd be, you'd be applying to do another capital project, saying, we're going to forego the state assistance and we're going to fund the project, because there's no state assistance. So the only way to do a bond referendum currently is to apply as another capital project and to forego any state assistance that may be available without you. If I can just talk about the revenue stream. If you decide to go forward with a bond, the voters vote on it once, and it's always in your debt service budget. So that payment is always going to be in your debt service budget. Your energy savings is actually going to be in your current fund budget. And the revenue that you're taking in from the SRECs comes in as miscellaneous revenue under your current fund budget. So even though, like as Cliff said, the cost offset, it's actually coming out of two different pots in money, because the bond payments always come out of your debt service fund, and they're going to be fixed for a couple of financing scenarios that were put together by your auditor today. They did a twelve-year and a fifteen-year scenario. That money comes out of your debt service fund, and your actual energy savings and the SREC revenue comes in through your general fund. Your auditor put together some preliminary analysis just to start the conversation. They did a twelve-year and a fifteen-year schedule. They used a conservative interest rate, a four and a half on the twelve-year schedule, and a four seventy-five on the fifteen-year schedule. They're both very conservative, because you wouldn't be issuing the bonds until a couple of months after you've had the actual approval. And their schedule takes into consideration the energy savings and the SREC revenues that were supplied by the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions to.
Well, I wanted to answer a question that was asked already about the impact that the taxpayer and people go over to.
Sure. Based on the twelve-year analysis, now, what's important to know is, these are just preliminary analysis.
They're estimates.
Extreme estimates, because we, what we have to forecast is not only what bond interest rates are in five or six months when you go to sell the bonds, but it's, this estimate is also taken into consideration what SREC is going to be sold for fifteen years from now. So that's why your architect is using four hundred and forty dollars, even though today they're selling it for six hundred and seventy-five dollars, because these estimates are going out fifteen years. Also, your energy savings is also going to change slightly, but it is a steady number of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Based on the average assessed house at three hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, the twelve-year scenario they came up with was a four dollar and sixty-eight cent increase. And based on the fifteen-year analysis, it was a nine dollar and ten cent increase. So both are less than ten dollars. Depending on the exact specifications of the system, the interest rate fluctuation, the SRECs, those numbers can change, but just need to be a rough idea, we just want to get the conversation started. And those numbers will probably change by the time you're actually here, if you decide to go out for a vote at your annual election in April, because we'll have a better idea of the size, the exact size of the system and what current market interest rates are for bonds at that time. Just to get the conversation started, so you know kind of all of our points.
Now, just so everyone knows, because they may not, that number is based on what? What is the gross number that you're basing on that?
That's based on that seven million dollar bond issue.
Of which, of which how much is based on the solar itself, approximately?
Three point nine.
Three point nine. So.
And that number's taken into consideration, no assistance from the system.
Now, just so everybody knows, the balance of that number comes from an added component to the potential referendum, which would be technology and safety. So in our budget, in our proposal, well, let me back up. In last year's budget, I believe we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for technology. This year, in the most horrific budget we're ever faced with in the history of our municipality, we've budgeted, which has even been written in stone, eighty thousand dollars in technology. And let me explain to everybody clearly, that number does not scratch the surface of the needs of this district. So what I propose is to add three million dollars to that number, or a gross number of seven million dollars, which would include technology and safety issues. I mean, there's, there's elementary schools that still need floor repairs, for example. Rackliff School is one of them. I mean, you walk through Rackliff School, and there's still patches in the floor that are, you know, that are bare that need, need to be replaced. So we have Mr. Nicoletti direct the buildings and grounds, go through all the facilities, whether it's playgrounds, or sidewalks, or fire doors, whatever those items are, we'll break them down for everybody for the next meeting. But that, as long as, as well as smartboards and laptops, all this technology that is sort of broken up from school to school. You can walk into one school and there's technology everywhere, like the middle school, like here, for example. You walk in our library, and it's state-of-the-art, it's a spectacular facility. You go across the street and go to high school, and it's woefully inept. We don't have the money to bring it up to speed. This referendum, if we put it before the voters, for the voters to decide, not for this board to decide, but for the voters, the public to decide, would bring us up to speed across the board in all of our facilities, instead of having the haves and have-nots. For the PTOs that have done a fabulous job in this district for, you know, Spring Garden, Rackliff, and the money that's poured in from all of these schools is mind-boggling, the help that this board in this district have gotten from the PTOs. But that's not going to last forever, and that's not going to get it done, even there. You know, and the technology changes. So Mr. Cook and I have discussed this a little bit as far as looking at leasing equipment instead of purchasing equipment. So as it, as it becomes obsolete, and we can replace it with new material over the life of this project. Does anybody have any other questions?
I have a couple of.
Got it, Mr. Rogers.
All right, the total price tag of the referendum, I have a couple of questions. This is one, this is probably for the VA. The total price tag for the entire referendum, talking about energy, technology, and all the things that you just stated, what is the total price tag of the referendum?
It's on your sheet, direct there, seven million dollars.
Seven million dollars, okay. What would the approximate impact be on the property owners of this township?
He just gave you the numbers.
That's it? The whole worth?
That's the number.
That's yearly?
Yeah, it's an average for the twelve years, the twelve-year maturity schedule, four dollars and sixty cents. And basically, how that was calculated is principal and interest on the bonds at four and a half percent, less the SREC revenue, less the energy savings.
So four dollars and somewhat a year, we're talking about.
Correct. The average is that.
Now, a question for you is.
Let me finish.
A question for you, since you're the attorney. One of the things that government has a habit of doing, is letting the taxpayers know how much money we're going to save, get their tax dollars, and what we're going to do to reduce or at least stabilize property taxes. Now, I got to admit, I came in here rather skeptical about this, but I think this may be a good idea. A good idea, if we can somehow put into this bond, a question, may not be able to do it, so you're going to need to. so you're going to give me an education tonight, I hope, that the revenue after a certain period of time that comes back into this district goes right back into property tax relief, guaranteed, so that the money isn't taken from this project and spent for no project. I'd love to see the money finally go back to the taxpayers. How can we do that?
Well, you put that in the resolution, didn't you?
No. What would be in the question is the description of this project. And you can only spend the bond proceeds on the actual questions that are being included in the actual projects. What you can't do is say that these miscellaneous revenue that you're going to get fifteen years from now is going to go towards X, Y, and Z projects. There's no way to legislate that fifteen years from now, what's going to happen to that money. The legal specifications of the ballot question are pretty clear of what we have to put in the ballot question. It's really required by law and has to be in the ballot.
But what we can, there's some mechanism we could put on that question to get the money back to the property tax owners.
What you, for example, let's go through your question. You're going to do seven million dollars for the technology upgrades, security, a couple of facilities projects, and solar energy. If you don't spend up to that seven million dollars, if you spend six point five million dollars, because we all know the economy's bad, hopefully you're going to get good bidders coming in, so hopefully the architect's estimate is very conservative and the bids are going to be at six and a half million dollars. You're required by law to take that five hundred thousand dollars and put it towards debt service relief. You don't have any option. Once those projects are complete, if they're all complete, you have CO, you've done everything, you're required by law to take that money and pay down your debt service. You pay principal as it matures on the outstanding mortgage. That, I don't have to put in the question, that's the way the law is. So you don't have any flexibility in terms of bond proceeds.
Correct.
In terms of the S-Rex revenue that's going to come in to you as miscellaneous revenue, or your energy savings that you're going to have, you're going to have energy savings, so you're going to cut it out of your energy line item. If you as a board decide then to reduce your budget by that...
So, Mr. President, as you said, that would be a resolution then of sitting...
I believe it is. We'll be checking counsel, but I believe you're correct.
Thank you.
But to also answer your question, the taxpayer is receiving relief because the whole premise of this spreadsheet is, the reason it's only X, or we'll call it for now, is because this is all relief. Every S-Rex sold is relief to the taxpayers, getting money back to the taxpayer. It says self-funding project, is that correct?
Substantially, other than the couple dollars.
I understand. I guess what I'm driving at is, it's nice one day for someone else to see our tax bill and to see the relief right there. I understand what you're saying, but to the families that are out of work, losing jobs, homes are being foreclosed, you know, there's this hue and cry, let's try to find ways to reduce the property taxes in town. And I think this is a good idea initiated here, and this may be an opportunity for us to do that. Thank you.
Just to comment, Mr. Russo. If the fifty years here are the S-Rex at four forty, if, at least for the next year or two, at six fifty, six seventy, that's a fifty percent increase in the S-Rex, which actually would wipe out the cost of the taxpayer and that would go to zero, as long as we did by resolution, saying S-Rex revenue has to go to, you know, that miscellaneous has to go to debt service, to cover the debt service by resolution.
That's something you're...
It's a good point.
You talked to your local...
And the other question that I do have of you is, are there any issues around, you know, the life of the product that's being bought and the bond, length of duration of the bond? In other words, you know, the solar panels that's due twelve years, that's not an issue because it's got a twenty-five year warranty and it's got a life expectancy, you know, so that's not an issue. But when you get into, and, you know, playgrounds and stuff like that probably is not, when you get into technology, is there any issue there? Or can you average out the life of the different products, so that as long as you fit into metrics, that works?
And that's basically what you do. You take the average useful life of the project being financed. So, for example, a technology, a computer has a five-year useful life, the solar project has a twenty-year useful life. So that's why we came up with a twelve-year maturity schedule, which is kind of back at the end of it. It's the average. The average useful life of the items being financed. So technically, you're going to pay for the solar panels, over twelve years it will be done, but they have eight more useful life than the computers have a little less, but when you take the average, that's how it's done.
Mr. Cook, and Mrs. Russo?
My question, I heard the S-Rex are only good for fifteen years.
Correct.
And so it's going to die?
Ah, it's the law, it's the law.
Quite, it's the law.
Right.
So what we would earn in one given year would expire in fifteen years, but the subsequent years would then have fifteen years?
So, in years, so let's say you installed the system in 2012. So fifteen years from 2012, your sixteenth year, you would no longer get an S-Rex from the state.
But you'd be saving electricity. Savings of energy on the electric for...
So if we know for reference, if our bond is for twelve years, from year twelve to fifteen, how are we paying that?
Paid for, right? It's not paid for.
You're already paid for the asset and you're still bringing in rents. So you have three years of no payment going out, but revenue coming in.
Right. So that's Mr. Rogers' point. How do we manage that savings for those three years? Because that substantial increases and hopefully we can come to an agreement consensus on it.
And these models that were put together are just to start the discussion.
Right.
The board might want to be more aggressive and pay for the items quicker. That's not how. The quicker you pay for it, the less interest expense you're going to have, the lower your interest rate is going to be. And then the longer you're going to have at the back end, where you're still going to have S-Rex. But those are board decisions. We just gave you models to start the discussion. Those are decisions we don't take now.
Ma'am? Certainly, please. Again, I told you we meant the bond. Exactly what was sort of John saying here. We paid off that bond because we got the grants. And that's how you would get the savings. You would project out to the taxpayer a five dollars and fifty-eight cents or forty-eight cents increase. If you get extra money from the REX half next year, you can use that to pay down the debt. And there's where you reduce, so that five forty-eight would go down ten cents, eight cents, whatever, because you're going to take off the balance. Again, the way the bond's going to work is, it's a straight funding bond. The same principle every year for twelve years, and the interest off the declining balance. So if you make that balance go down, you'll have less interest and less debt. And there's where you should have savings, because you're going to separate here and as you decrease that balance, you'll drop the rate down. So you will get the taxpayer's savings.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
There's just annual decisions you would make with your annual budget.
Yes.
You're going through the budget preparation process. Next year, if you have this extra money, you're going to decide where to put it.
Can you just pay down bonds like that, or are they callable, or...
The way bonds are traditionally issued, you can mark it out, they have a ten-year call provision. So you can actually go and take the bonds out of bond holders' hands for ten years. But what you would do as a board, you would take that money and transfer it over to pay down the principal that year. So instead of asking the taxpayers to pay four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the principal that year, you might have an extra two hundred and forty thousand dollars that you would apply to the principal. And you would only have to raise two hundred and forty thousand dollars in your debt service. So you can't actually take the bond out of the bond holder's hand, but you can internally take that money and then pass the voters for two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Just the experts in the room, there seems to be a moratorium on state incentives. Is there anything happening on the federal level regarding grants that perhaps could the phrase of a cost?
We probably can all answer this. You don't pay taxes as a school district. So you don't get any benefits from the federal government. No incentives that they have to give schools any money for energy. All of those are given right now, and federal government is trying to give them to homeowners. So that's where the incentives are. Will that change? Could change, but no one can guess that. The state right now, as he pointed out, was, there's no grants, there's no incentives, there's nothing available today. Doesn't mean there will be five years from now or two years from now, but you can't guess that. The market kind of plays with that. So when those incentives are there, you know, you have to watch the market because it could change as well.
And if you, just to expand, if you follow what's going on with the state grant process, it's been...
The debt service, the last I heard, it's been things thrown out there. It's not existing, but even when it comes back, we don't think it's going to apply to solar. So if it comes back, when it comes back, I think they're going to limit what is available for...
Seeing that, I mean, thank you, gentlemen, very much. Very enlightening, very exciting. I appreciate that, considering one of the... Thank you. Any committee reports? Okay. Move on to the first hearing of citizens, who now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to discuss the board. This section, we allow questions or comments on all. Only resolution items are mentioned. Our board regulations allow twenty minutes for discommunications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and yes, you try to stay within this requirement. All statements will be directed to the chair, and no one may address board members individually. Will first person come to the microphone, please, on resolution items on board?
Terry Corrigan, forty-five hands in place, Mountain Paranoia, Superintend. I have a question about Schedule A under Superintendent's resolutions, approval of travel lists. Under Douglas Jones, dealing with difficult people, how to communicate with tact and skill, I just wanted to know, perhaps Mr. Rogers can answer this, what's the educational significance behind that?
Well, these are programs, opportunities that are presented to principals and teachers, and they, as for approval, certainly in an administrative position, any administrative position, a majority of your day is consumed with people. And Mr. Jones requested to attend this, and he felt that it would be useful to him, and we approved it.
Do you turnkey types, if someone sees a workshop, they come back and they present it?
For example, with our principals, at principals' meeting, we, yes, have to do a presentation.
Many.
Nothing extensive. And also, everyone who does go on a professional basis, they should report.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else supposed to be here on resolution items on board tonight? Seeing that, Mr. Russo, we please read the move superintendent's resolutions as I want to, please, as listed?
Yes, I'd like to move superintendent.
Just a minute. Need a corner, we want a fourth person, we need five. So just sit tight. I'll look for a turn, she will shortly. You can do those roll situations. Just while we're waiting for Dr. Reed to return, I'll just let everyone here know that we will not be going into executive session. Okay. We will not be going into executive. We accomplished everything we needed to accomplish earlier. This board will schedule more than likely two follow-up meetings for interviews for candidates for the superintendent's position on February tenth and February fourteenth. So we had our initial, our initial app line from Hudson Associates earlier tonight, and we also had some budget discussions. Okay, Mrs. Russo, could you please move superintendent's resolutions as listed, please?
Yes, I'd like to move superintendent resolutions as listed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, call roll, please. I'm sorry. Call roll, please.
Mr. Cook, though?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, Dr. Reed, would you please move Board Secretary's resolutions, one and two, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Board Secretary's resolutions, one and two, as listed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, call roll, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
I would like to thank the board for their support for this. I think it's an incredible opportunity for this district. And as I said earlier, in the executive portion, this board and board members that came way before any of us sitting here have looked for alternate sources of revenue and of funding. And we've scrapped and begged, we've gone to banks, we've gone to business people, and we've gone to former graduates and put the courtyard together, and now we're going to do some beautification in front of the high school. But this, this gives us something tangible, some real hard numbers, millions and millions of dollars, tangible revenue generation, which we've never had the opportunity before. It gives us green energy, it saves us on electric, it helps keep the planet a better place to live. And I thank the United support that lies here tonight before, so thank everyone, yes. This is a special meeting, just so everybody knows, and normally, in special meetings, we don't do a second hearing of citizens or all business and new business. Normally, we just adjourn. But since there may be some questions and it's early, we'll have a second hearing. So in this section, we allow questions or comments on school-related matters. I stated earlier, all questions will be directed towards the chair. So if anybody wants to speak on any school-related items, please step forward, and then, once we're done, there'll be a public question for all the joining in.
Terry Corrigan, forty-five hands in place, spokesperson for the Mountain Paranoia Network. I have a question in regards to, in June, the social worker that was at the high school had resigned. I was just wondering if that position was filled?
Social worker at the high school, I believe, I couldn't say, we had an awful lot of turnover regarding social workers, psychologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists. I believe we're fully staffed.
Okay, good. That's new. And I just wanted to have some information about the cameras in all the buildings. Are they in all the hallway, are there cameras in the hallways?
There are cameras in the high school.
Are there in any of the elementary schools?
They are, they are in progress at being installed. Some schools have them, some, I couldn't give you the full accounting, yes, but I know it's in progress, but there is no provision for cameras in the middle school, but we're hoping to address that in this referendum.
So in the elementary, you're getting cameras in those buildings?
Yes.
Okay, and they will be in all of the hallways?
I can speak to the high school as an example. There's a small camera that's in the hall that can seat down four corridors at once.
And how does that work? Is there like a tape to those, I mean, are they logged?
They are recorded on the computer. I know they don't last forever, but they do last for a reasonable amount of time.
And does anybody monitor them?
Usually, I know when there's a situation at the high school, the principal will chat the tape. If there's theft or there's vandalism, they will go and chat the tape.
Okay, all right.
It's been very helpful, really has. And to answer your first question, we've had so many movement and transfers, I know we're fully staffed, I'm not quite sure if the person that was at the high school that was filled and moved to another location by concern with the chair.
Okay, good.
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to be here?
Good evening, Alex Turbans, 35400.F. I was very interested in the SOLAR presentation. And I've been researching for my home for many years and it hasn't been cost-effective for us, the whole of it. And I'm sorry to see the architects leave, I have questions for that. But this bond referendum that you're looking to include, the SOLAR portion, if I understand the numbers that were up on the screen, that the SOLAR portion of this referendum, this bond, would be paid off within two-thirds of the life of the bond? Does the bond have to be 12 years?
No, it doesn't have to be, that's, that's one of the things that we're going to determine as a board, what's the best case scenario for that bond?
And then the other question?
12, is it 15, is it 10?
Right, because if you're paying off your installation at seven and your technology that you're looking to put into the high school and the computers and someone has an obsolescence, I think about five. And having a bond of like eight years, not be more reasonable. You know, to meet, you know, to meet what, you know, he's going to be working with the resources. But the question that I wanted to ask the architects, but you probably?
I can answer that, well, no, I'll get to the answer.
The technology that they own put up, is that the same technology of the panels that will be put onto our boats?
It's very similar, the technology has not changed that much already, eight years span.
Right, and also, you know, researched and saw that coming out of Boston, that there's a new generation of solar panels. So if you put up panels that are probably going to be obsolete in a few years, would we have the opportunity to get it upgraded?
No, and we asked that question in the facilities committee meeting, it's a great question. And, you know, the professionals told us at the time, there really hasn't been that much of a change over the last eight years. That they've been upgraded slightly, but not any type of unique modification in the systems. And they don't anticipate any dramatic discernible difference in the near future is what we were told. So that, you know, it comes down to if not now, when? That's what it comes down to. You give up that SREC value for the next couple of years and waiting for, you know, something better to come along and still be without the technology or the safety or the upgrades are looking to do. So it's a tough question, but it's a good question.
And then the last question I have for the board, in relation to the solar project, how do we, homeowners, get on that bandwagon? Would it be possible to negotiate a better installation deal for us as a homeowner, since they'll be working here in the town?
I think the, I think the answer is no, but I certainly asked them to give me your number after the meeting, we have a call.
I'm sure there are many, I'm surprised we didn't have the use here, I'm sure there were many more.
Just one thing, when we did have a previous presentation, they had asked that same question about where is the volume discounts come in? And it's based on size of roof, not number of roofs. So 10,000, some of the engineering work and some of the work that has to be done, it doesn't matter whether you have a 10,000 square foot, 100,000 square, 1,000 square foot roof, it's the same cost. So there's not a lot of economies of scale that you would, homeowners are going to realize, based on what they had told us before.
That's too bad. Yeah, that, that was the main thing, because I know the commissioners, the, you know, the town commissioners were looking to do something similar. I'm sure that's going to be a separate effort.
Well, I'm glad you asked that question, because I haven't spoken, but I was going to speak to you later, but since you brought it up now, and we'll tell you, because it was brought up by the board, can we do a shared service with this project? And I reached out to a couple of commissioners who referred me to Commissioner Tucci, who's really, it falls under his purview, if you will, since he's Parks and Recreation and he handles the buildings in town on municipal side, manages those buildings. And we did have a discussion, and I let him know that it looked like we were going to have further discussions in regard to SOLAR. And I asked him on the phone if he felt like there was a potential for a shared service for that. He said to me that he had missed a, an opportunity earlier for a grant and that right now, as we discussed with the professionals, there is no grant money right now. And he kind of is hoping and anticipating that there'll be something down the road, but right now, there's, there's nothing out there. So I told him then, if he was not looking to do something jointly, then we would move ahead, so that we can immediately reap the benefits of that. And I think they're kind of laying off anyway, because if you notice, we're doing six schools, not seven, we can't do this school because it's a pitched roof, it's not a flat roof. I think they're saddled with the same components, if you will, in that I believe that the only flat roof, or one of the only flat roofs they have is Parks and Recreation. Might be a flat roof at the Public Works Department, but I don't think they have the same opportunity there as we do to do that. But we'll have, we'll have further discussions now that we've approved the resolution. And certainly we'll reach out to them again as a body at the next meeting on Tuesday and discuss this in front of them. So thank you for bringing that up here, I'm reminded. Anyone else wish to be here?
Hi, Amy Christman, 237 River Road. Just a couple of quick questions. I know the SOLAR is all in its infancy, are you leaning towards more buying it outright, do you think?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay.
Because buying, buying it outright will allow us to move the technology and safety component as well.
Okay.
So we can tie it all in, all in together.
I was curious about, I wanted to make sure.
Yes, yep.
And another thing, since you brought up technology, I wasn't sure if the board was aware of, at what age, gifted and talented, they're supposed to be identified? And the programs are supposed to be initiated? Everybody aware of it?
I'm sure Mrs. R is aware of it.
I don't know, because it's kindergarten, is when it's supposed to start, according to the New Jersey Department of Education. And it doesn't start here in kindergarten, it starts now in the fourth grade and it used to start in the third. So I just wanted to make people aware of that. The identification process and the differentiated curriculum is supposed to start at the kindergarten, you know, somewhere in that kindergarten year. You know, when teachers or parents want, you know, if they see something different in their child.
Mr. President, can I address that?
Sure.
Should I address that?
Sure.
I think we're all aware of it, because we just passed policy that we are identifying our students, all of our students from kindergarten through 12th grade. So I think every one of us that was here and that was aware of that.
Well, you might be aware of it, but there's no differentiated curriculum being provided for the children in kindergarten, first, second, third grade. Excuse me?
I'm lost.
Oh, okay, okay, so I mean, identifying, it's not just identifying, it's identifying and initiating according to the statute, not just identifying, initiating the curriculum. So I just wanted to make sure of that. But on a lighter note, I was curious about the status of uniforms. Does anybody know anything about uniforms? I know it's been brought up a couple times, any?
Well, the last, the last discussion we had was that Mr. Reed and Zinsky will be presenting something at the next meeting to the full board and the public.
Okay.
As far as what they've gathered.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Yeah, and then just anything about, from Washington School, with regards to volunteering at lunch? If parents wanted to volunteer at lunch, what's, what's policy with regards to that?
Well, in the past, we've had requests from parents and we just want to know a little bit about, have they had, are they certified as a teacher? Do they have some certificate, some, some precaution, some background that they'll be working with our children?
Okay, I mean, I'm talking about in the lunchroom.
Oh, I, I didn't refer to clubs.
No, 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 not clubs, no, in the lunchroom, if there was. Yeah, and, you know, there are some parents at my school who we've been talking about trying to, you know, help. You know, your kids come home with some crazy stories, which you believe, you take with the greatest of them.
No, I would be glad to, to explore that with you and anyone else and present it to the board for consideration. I apologize, I thought you were referring to parents sponsoring clubs.
No, no, okay, I just didn't know how to, how to start it, because I know, I know there's.
Please contact me.
Okay.
When you said something, you were simply, your hands are bounced now.
Anyone else wish to be here? Seem?
Jessica Northman, Land Bureau. I was just wondering if the board had a chance to review the traffic report that Jack Barry had?
I actually received, I think, you know, the copy the district has received last week, I was away on business, I haven't even looked at it in detail. I kind of skimmed through it and I had a couple of questions for Mr. Barry. But I think the one thing that was glaring, and I'll go into more detail at the next regular meeting, was that it was exactly as we said, that there's a lot of cars speeding down the street on Bloomfield Avenue.
Actually, we have copied the report and that's actually not glaring, I think that this repeated, a repeated.
To me, it's glaring.
Well, actually, Mr. Barry's recommendation is that there is not a stop, drop and go and that no cars will flip through the back of the school. And that was the board, or the PTO was Executive Board.
Okay.
And our recommendation to this board and to everyone at Apple Tacko, that a stop, drop and go, not go behind the school.
Well, again, let me make one thing perfectly clear, can I back up? Is it okay if I back up a little bit? Because I want to go to the beginning of this, so everyone is clear. The commissioner came to me months ago with a plan, because we were both extremely concerned as former presidents of PTOs at Ratcliffe School, were greatly concerned about the traffic problem on Bloomfield Avenue.
Pardon me?
Let me, let me just, excuse me, allow me to finish.
It was never the.
If you're not going to allow me to finish, then we'll be done.
The problem is that Ms. Riley never told us, because it's not the traffic problem, but it's the land.
We're done, anyone else wish to be here? If you don't want to let me finish.
I'll let you finish, but the problem is that you have never listened. If not, we have a problem with the land.
Could I finish?
Go right ahead, but this is the problem, you have not listened.
Not letting me finish. Could I ask you again, could I please finish? Months ago, the commissioner of public safety came to me with the joint concern of the traffic problem on Bloomfield Avenue. We didn't imagine it, he came to me with his traffic safety person and said, "Take a look at this, what do you think?" And I said, "I don't know, I'm not a safety expert, I don't pretend to be a safety expert." But am I concerned about the traffic on Bloomfield Avenue and speeding vehicles? Has Jack Barry details in his report going down Bloomfield Avenue? I'm absolutely concerned, I'm gravely concerned. The last thing I want on my list is somebody getting hurt crossing that street that they're not supposed to cross, because they're supposed to go down to the corner and cross, but do they? No, they violate the law, they cross the middle of the street. So I'm trying to correct that problem. So I bought that study before the board, and we discussed it as a board, including the principal who's sitting here that day. Then, because there was concern with this, I, along with the superintendent, went before your committee and your PTO and discussed exactly that, that behind the school was an option for the stop, drop and go. The people at that meeting discussed their concern with having it behind the school. And as I've said at many meetings, including the last meeting I was here at, when I discussed it, I said, again, I don't pretend to be the expert, I just know we have a problem there. And what are the answer is Chestnut Street, as I said that night, I don't know if you were here or not, but I said, in my opinion, the best case scenario solution for the problem that we have, not only today, but forever on Bloomfield Avenue, especially even more so now, because buses, did you know that buses didn't generally go down Bloomfield Avenue years ago? That they used to go down Franklin Avenue? And then that pattern was diverted to go down to Bloomfield Avenue, which I still don't even understand the logic behind that, but that's all another story. So I will continue to look at the options to make Ratcliffe School the safer place for the kids in this district. Even when I'm gone, even in April, when I'm mull over on the Board of Education, I will continue to try to make that a safer street for the children crossing the street and the people crossing the street. I will never stop doing that. And can I make a decision? I'm one member of a nine-member board, I can't make a decision, but here's what I know. I will continue to, I will speak to Jack Barry, because by the way, one of the people in Jack Barry did not ask anything about that report, it was me. I don't, did he ask you any questions on that study? Okay, so part of, I don't even know who directed him to do that study, it wasn't me, was it you?
Well, that was a question that was raised last week, whether it was a public safety, I asked about the report last week. This board said that it was not a Board of Ed issue, that it was a public safety issue. This is what they say when you're not here.
An issue, well, the study came, the study didn't come from us.
The traffic study is a public safety issue, it is not a Board of Ed issue. Which I find hard to swallow when it's happening on Board of Ed property.
I never, I never said that. I never said that, it's an issue for me.
Please, you are not here. The rest of the board agreed last week that it was a public safety issue.
Well, the report is.
I understand that, but now they're saying that they have no say on something that is happening on Board of Ed property. Now the traffic study has been done, it is back, Jack Barry's, in throughout the whole traffic report, over and over, is stated over and over, that it is not a safe condition to run traffic, a stop, drop and go behind the school, that is unsafe. That is, what is happening now is, in his words, effective and efficient. This is not, that the biggest problem is that traffic is not, the laws of, it's pedestrians and it's cars violating the laws of the road.
Speeding down Bloomfield Avenue, which is my local concern.
Well, no, Chestnut is also our, is our concern. If you look at the accidents, they're on Chestnut.
Should be one way.
The bulk of the accidents in the last three weeks have been on Chestnut, not Bloomfield Avenue.
Should be, should be in one way.
We had snow removal and shots finally last week after many phone calls on Chestnut, not Bloomfield. It's Chestnut. And, and this is where it's, or whenever, it's, it's for you, it's Bloomfield, but it.
No, for me, it's both, I just said.
It, it's both. You know, there's a causin key actually.
That's why I said, in my opinion, if you're asking it, in my opinion, the best case scenario is a one-way down Chestnut Street.
The best case scenario is to actually ask the parents that go there, not have the board or public safety push something down parents' throats without asking.
Who's pushing anything down parents' throats?
No, because this board and public safety, Apple Tacko and yourself, have now done all of this back talk to one another before anything was even produced before our PTO.
I don't, I don't even know what you're talking about.
You do know what I'm talking about. You actually came to our first PTO meeting with a little mock drawing of how a park and our drop-off would run behind our school.
That's the drawing I received from public safety.
And then we were told at that same meeting, this was a dead issue. This is a dead issue where your words, which are actually in our PTO minutes, so you can deny saying it, Mr. Riley, they're in our PTO minutes.
You're not listening, you're so wrapped up in this stuff.
No, I'm not, you know what who wrapped up in? It's like a shell game.
Okay.
We say this, you say this, it's public safety and Board of Ed.
You're right.
We want to know when, Mr. Riley, your word is actually your word and when an issue is a dead issue.
You're right.
No, when is it actually going to be a dead issue?
It's, it's, you're done. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Can the rest of the board tell me when it actually could be a dead issue?
The, you addressed me as the chair and twenty of you as the chair. And you've addressed me.
We're not going away, Mr. Riley, we're not going away.
I've allowed you a lot.
Every Board of Ed meeting, we're here.
I'm not either.
We're not going away.
I'm here, I'm not going anywhere.
Either way, after you're gone, those will be.
Okay, and I'll still be around. By the way, my kids went to that school too, I had the same concern.
Long ago, long ago, Mr. Riley.
I think that, I think that matters not, honestly.
I think it matters not either.
Okay, anyone else wish to be here? You'd have to come up and state your name and address, yes, ma'am.
It's, it's, it's over, I don't know. I look closer for Ratcliffe.
Ma'am, please.
There are safety issues there.
Thank you very much.
I don't know what's going on between this group and that group.
I don't either.
But I will say this, I'm a former educator and one of the things that I noticed, and I even went to the school myself at one time, parents come and they drop off their kids, and I understand, want to get your children to school, they park on the street. When I was growing up, it was like, you always taught your child to go to the corner and cross at the corner, because you have a crossing guard there. And I don't know if, you know, if they'll help in, but I noticed a lot of people cross in the middle of the street with their children. And this is what we're teaching our children.
That's how this whole thing began.
And, you know, maybe there could be someplace where they can drop them off. I don't know if it would work on Chestnut behind the school, because then you would have traffic going through there, coming out Bloomfield Avenue. going through there, coming out Bloomfield Avenue, and I live right across from there, so I don't know how you would be able to solve the problem. Yes, there are speeding cars, I've seen speeding buses, even at night, I hear the buses.
All day.
You know, and I've been there seventeen years, and they've, the buses have been there since I moved there. But what I'm trying to say is that, I think that we need to inform parents at these schools that when you drop off your children, that you teach them to go to the corner, we have two crossing guards in the corner, and I think you also put one on the street that comes out right across from the office, I've noticed there's a new one here.
By the way, the problem's not the children, if it were the children, they would go to the corner.
Well, I, you know, I know, like, it's very hectic here.
They're being crossed by adults.
Right, it is very hectic on that street.
Especially now, you just mentioned that snow is there.
Yeah, oh, the snow is like, you know, yeah. And it is, it's a crowded situation, it's a main drag, but it's like unbelievable, I mean, I watch it every morning, and I feel for you, I understand.
The snow is by the crossing guard too, we have parents shoveling, crossing guard.
Oh, I know, oh, I know, I saw someone shoveling, but you know what, I, I understand, because we have the same problems, but, you know, as I said, we need to have people understand that your children should go to the corner where there is a crossing guard, a lot of parents do, but there are still some that don't, so, just, you know...
Anyone else wish to be here? Motion to adjourn? Second? Second.